Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting of February 25, 2019. Our first agenda item is signing of the warrant.
I move, Mr. Chairman.
I second it.
And I will make that unanimous. Second approval is we have two sets of minutes. We have the regular session minutes from February 11th, and we have executive session minutes from February 11th as well.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
And I will make that unanimous as well. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak?
Yes. Thank you, Board. My name is Steve Dibble. I live in Salem, Massachusetts. I'm actually the city council president this year up there, but I also work here in Milford at Planet Aid over on Sumner. Planet Aid is a worldwide nonprofit, as you might know. We collect clothes and shoes in some 23 states around the United States. With the proceeds, we donate monies, actually all the monies back. Right now, we're funding about one, we're giving money to roughly 100 nonprofits in Massachusetts alone, never mind the rest of the United States, and we work with people and environmental efforts in some 50 countries all around the world. One example of those is in Mozambique, Africa, where Planet Aid helps feed some 83,000 children every day in schools that Planet Aid helps start, and Planet Aid helps train or pay for the training of those teachers. Eighty-three thousand kids every day. That's just one of 50 environmental and people helping efforts that we're doing around the world with the clothes that we collect in those yellow bins that you see all across the United States. Okay? Our worldwide corporate offices are here in Milford, right on Sumner, next to the Benjamin Moore Paint Factory. I would like to extend an invitation to the selectmen to come see and tour our facility to get a better understanding of what we do, and you can take pride in what we do with the clothing all around the world. It's pretty impressive what we do, not just with the clothing and shoes, but everything that we're doing there that we're recycling and helping people. I will be meeting with your Parks Department soon, as earlier tonight I was with the Board of Health, speaking to them about getting one of our bins located at your transfer station. But I'm going to be meeting with the Parks Department. The directors of Planet Aid would like me to start a very large community garden behind our warehouse, next to the bike trail that will be open to the public to grow vegetables in. On the roof of that building, you'll see, if you do come on the tour, I'll bring you up to the roof, you'll see that we have, I think we have more solar panels on our roof than any other building in Massachusetts. It's a pretty big warehouse with a lot of solar panels. With that, again, I would like to extend invitation to have you come at your convenience and tour. If you'd like to do it tomorrow morning, I'm available. I'm going to leave you my card. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Chairman?
No.
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dibble.
Thank you. Anybody else for invitation to speak? Amy, real quick, let me just read your letter to the board, if you don't mind. Dear Chairman Walsh, Citizens for Milford will be holding the Fifth Annual Beautification Day with the Upper Milford Trail on Saturday, April 27, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. through 1:00 p.m. We would like to invite you, as well as Selectman Buckley and Selectman Kincaid, to join us in cleaning up the streets of Milford. This event has been such a success, and we hope that the Board of Selectmen will approve this worthwhile event. Thank you for your continued support. Amy Sanborn. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Hard to believe that it's the Fifth Annual Cleanup Day. We've been really successful. Again, we're working with the trail this year, and April 27th, we're meeting across the street from the Sacred Heart Church, 9 o'clock, if people want to come over, and Republic Services is donating bags, vests, and gloves, and we can put you out in the direction of a place in Milford that needs to be, the trash needs to be cleaned up. We also have the inmates from the Worcester County Sheriff's Department coming on the Thursday and Friday prior, the 25th and 26th, and they're going to come and clean up trash. And I have Scott Cruz of Foley's team will come and pick up the trash, full bags that they had on those two days. We will provide the inmates lunch. And let's see, I've been working also with Palmaza Kelly and the Health Department, and they've been wonderful, in getting the supplies that we need and getting in touch with Republic Services for us. So it's been a great event, and I hope that we have a good crowd coming out to help clean up the streets of Milford.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Amy, I've always had an opportunity to go. I think I've been at all of them, but if I haven't, that would be a surprise, but great effort by you and the group.
Thank you.
You know, hopefully, we're contributing as well beyond what the Parks Department and Board of Health are contributing. I know we've taken a special look at that park, the land across in that parking lot, and done a lot of work with mulch and beautification. We've got a landscaper and somebody helping us with cleanup and weeds. And this just, I think, when you see the public interest and your group spearhead efforts like this, I think it's consistent with what we're trying to do in terms of beautification of downtown, revitalization of downtown, and hopefully, we'll have some things that we'll get to announce soon that even further put examples out there of, you know, growth and people responding to this. But I just want to thank you and your group.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, Amy, I just want to say thank you to your folks. Citizens from Milford do a lot, as we know. You've made quite an impression on this town and helped to make it a better place, so thank you for that. I've had the opportunity as well to make it a couple times. I think I'm in town this year, so hopefully, I'll be there and hopefully bring Caleb so he can, we can start him young, too, helping out. I think that's important. And just to add that, I've had fun, too, when we've done it. It's a good group of people, and we've laughed a lot, and just, it's, you know, you're doing something good and just to let people know, we had a lot of fun, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Before I ask for the motion, it's just another example, Amy, of the good work that the Citizens for Milford, you know, perform in this community. As you know, we've got the forum coming up in March, but there's many, many more things that the Citizens for Milford do. You're an active group, and we appreciate everything you do and anything that we can do to support you. I'm speaking for myself. I'm here to help.
Appreciate it.
With that, I'll ask for a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a motion to support the Citizens for Milford Fifth Annual Beautification Day on the Upper Charles Trail, April 27, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and they'll be, again, organizing in the parking lot across from Sacred Heart Church on April 27, 9:00 a.m.
I'll second that.
I'll make that unanimous.
Thank you so much.
On your way you go.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy. Okay. Next agenda item is public hearings. There are no public hearings tonight. So next agenda item is scheduled appointments, and the only scheduled appointment we have tonight is the transfer of a common vicular license for Five Guys Restaurant. How are you?
I'm good, and you?
Good, thank you. Can you state your name and?
Okay, Maria Williams Silva.
Okay.
I'm here representing Five Guys as a district manager, and nothing's going to change. It's just the ownership. Everything will still stay the same, sales and everything, number of tables, chairs. It's just the ownership that's going to change on the 5th next month.
Okay. Pardon me for one second. I just got to find your application. I was reading it a while ago, and your hours of operation are going to stay the same as well?
Everything the same, yes.
Everything's going to stay the same. I can't find mine. Okay. So the building commissioner has no concerns. All the bathrooms are handicap accessible. Town planner, no change in actual use, no outstanding liens from the tax collector, no outstanding liens from the town treasurer, fire chief approved, police chief, no issues or concerns. Board of Health, required documents have been filed with this office, and transfer of owner is scheduled to take effect on March 5, 2019. Palmaza Kelly. So everything's in order, so. Questions, Bill, or?
Yeah, I just had a question. I'm trying to make sure I understand the transferring from what to what?
From Five Guys to Encore Enterprise.
All right. That's what's not here, and so I just wanted to make sure that when we issued the common vicular and the board voted on it, could you spell the name of the new corporation?
No. I didn't want to misspell it, make sure I have it right.
They've got the name of the applicant is E.R.E. Milford. And they use a Dallas, Texas address.
Yes.
So is that the name of the company you're going to give us?
Encore Enterprise, yes.
What is it?
Encore, E.N.C.O.R.E. Enterprise.
And they're out of Dallas, Texas?
Yes.
They're the parent company?
Um, cannot answer that.
Okay.
Well, if it's two, if the applicant is E.R.E. Milford F.G., I'm guessing that stands for Five Guys LLC.
I believe that is going to be the name of the new license holder.
I can look up. Because if they go by E.R.E., we can transfer it to E.R.E. I just want to transfer it to the right corporation. I don't have any particular concerns or?
I think we did confirm by phone that it's E.R.E. would be the new license holder, but I will double check on that.
All right. Well, we can do that, and if we have to make an amendment later, we can always fix that.
Okay. I mean, if you'd like, I can call right now?
No, no. No, that's all right. We're going to go with E.R.E. Milford F.G. LLC. So I say we're going to go. I'm going to make a motion, and the motion is going to be to transfer the common vicular license from Five Guys to E.R.E. Milford F.G. LLC.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well.
Good luck under the new ownership.
I mean, it's not Encore?
I'm reading from the application.
The application, okay.
Yeah, we did make a phone call, so I'm pretty sure it's accurate. I had the same question.
Okay.
I had my assistant call. Pretty sure.
I put the email on top of my desk, and I ended up leaving there.
This is fine. We spoke with someone in corporate.
We can amend it.
We'll make it right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Have a good night.
Be free to leave. All said, thank you. Next agenda item is the Town Administrator's Report. Rick?
Yes, just two items. I'm pleased to report that Milford has been designated by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, EEA, as an M.V.P. community, a municipal vulnerability preparedness community. This is the initial year of this program, which was established by the governor to address climate change. As the board, I sure remembers, we did receive a grant in the amount of $20,000. This grant was used to complete a community resiliency planning process that will examine the town's vulnerability and strengths, which will then be used to identify priority actions to build resilience as to climate changes. This will help us better understand the impacts of various natural hazard events, such as intense precipitation and winter storm events. The M.V.P. designation indicates Milford's commitment to preparing for climate change. As an M.V.P. community, the town will be eligible to apply for M.V.P. action grants as administered by the EEA and may receive increased standing in future state funding opportunities. The town will be required to submit yearly progress reports to the EEA by June 30 of each year. The second and last item I have is I just have been informed by Police Chief Tom Olafland that he has completed the process with the State 911 system to have 911 calls from cell phones go directly to the Milford Police Department. This will become effective February 28. Cell phone calls to 911 for police, fire, and emergency medical services will no longer be routed through the Massachusetts State Police, but instead will come directly to the dispatch center at Milford Police Headquarters. This will save crucial time and allow dispatchers to obtain the information necessary for an appropriate response by all public safety personnel. And that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick. Bill, I'll turn it over to you. No questions or comments?
My only comment is I'm really happy to hear about the cellular 911, more and more people getting rid of their landlines. It's very important, so that's a great accomplishment, so I'm happy to hear that. Thank you, Rick.
It is. That's why I kept the landline on the house.
Yep.
So that's nice to hear, so. Okay, thank you again, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay. Next agenda item is old business, the discussion of the Police Chief Selection Review Committee. Before we get started, I just would like to make a couple of notes. So I went through the bylaws extensively again, and one of the things that sticks out to me is on page, well, 74, page two. It shall, at the very top, "It shall be the duty of the Police Chief Selection Committee to establishment, establish minimum criteria for the position of police chief, including but not limited to the following." And then there were one, two, three, four, five, there's six different areas with bullet points of what that committee is looking for. What stuck out to me again was, and we'll open up for discussion, and then down in section B, "Select and recommend three to five finalists to the Board of Selectmen. Such recommendation shall be in writing and shall address all of the above criteria unranked." So I'm a little confused, I'm not confused, I take that back, I'm not confused. I don't, I think we should let the committee be the committee.
I agree.
You know what I mean? Let them, let them do what they need to do, and they'll bring back to us, because the guidelines are right here of what they have to follow.
Exactly.
And I just want to make sure that, you know, this board is comfortable with that, but it's right there in the bylaw.
Yeah, so my suggestion in the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, was that through you in the initial meeting to be able to represent the board and its needs as it relates to job description, that type of thing, you know, because you can only be liaison if we're participating and giving you information, is to discuss the types of criteria that would work in a job description, at least from our thinking. And I think I said it in the meeting, I hope I was clear, that those would be suggestions, but that the committee has to be the committee and do their job, right? And I agree with you, I couldn't agree more. And so, you know, the question, the question might be, might be posed to you, what are the selectmen thinking? And without something in writing from us, you might have no idea, without a vote, how to represent how the board feels about whether, and let me give you some examples. Should it be a requirement within the job description that the police chief live within the town of Milford? A lot of towns put that criteria, and what they say is within six months of appointment or whatever. You know, you would have to wing it as our liaison if, representing the board, if you've not heard from the board on that particular topic.
But I think that if you, if you really read that, Bill, I mean, it's pretty laid out for them to follow.
And what, yeah, I get, which line are you referring to?
The whole criteria. Just look at this criteria.
I have reviewed it. I'm just wondering if there's anything, because, you know.
Well, these are all the things, too, if I can, since we're having this dialogue, these are all the things that have to be included in the job description.
Exactly.
Other things can be added to this. These are the things that they're saying have to be included but not limited to, so.
What I'm saying is let the committee do their due diligence.
Agreed.
And bring to us their three to five finalists, and then we take it from there.
Right, but there may, remember, this was written some, what, 28 or so years ago?
It actually turns you there.
There may be, yeah, doesn't, but.
98.
Yeah, somewhere I saw, yeah. So it was written in 98.
Yeah.
And, you know, with the good intentions of our legislative body town meeting and the people that represented this board at the time, there may be something, I don't know, I can think of some things that might never have been thought of related to social media and liaison or whatever, that didn't even exist in 98, that couldn't have been thought of. So I'm not trying to interfere, and I don't think suggestions to the chairman of the board, who's going to be representing us, would be anything more than suggestions that go by vote, right? I don't, but if we were to mention social media, this doesn't discuss social media as an example.
There was no social media.
Exactly. So my only point is, while that is carefully thought out and very descriptive and detailed, it doesn't necessarily, a job description or a process written in 98 wouldn't necessarily cover looking for a police chief in 2019. So that's my only point.
So I think, I, my opinion, I think what we should do is we should get the committee started.
Agreed.
And I'll report back to you, and if we do it in executive session, we can have a discussion amongst the three of us?
Yeah, I don't think it's executive session.
Okay.
I really don't think it is. The debate that went on at our legislative body at town meeting was not executive session, the structuring of those requirements, and if, if the board has a particular leaning that we'd like to ask you to represent on a particular topic, then, you know, I think those are good suggestions, right?
Yes.
They carry one weight, they carry your weight. It's not any more or less than that.
Right. But I don't think we need to kind of muddy the waters, I guess, is a.
I don't, I don't know what that means, but, again, there are things that weren't thought of in 1998 that we may want to make recommendations through the chair, our liaison, and may never have been thought of back then. So if you'd like to take feedback, I'd be happy to give you my thoughts, only as my thoughts and suggestion and nothing more than that. Be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'll echo that, yeah, because even if we want to, once the committee's started, I can certainly either email you or provide, you know, Rick, with, with things to pass on to you that, you know, as the process goes on, because it's going to be a long process.
It is.
That maybe you keep in mind.
Everything through Rick, and Rick will fire it to me as chairman.
Okay, okay. That can work.
Okay.
Also, and this may be, this may be a Rick question, it probably is, have all of the members of that committee been contacted?
Yes, they've all.
I know you sent out letters initially for the.
They've accepted.
Position, okay, great. So everyone is on board?
Everyone is on board.
That's great.
Yes.
Hey, that's the first big hurdle.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. Next agenda item is new business, and the first thing in new business is the Lions Club requesting permission to obstruct a toll road from Route 16 to 109. It is, let me read the letter. Pennies for site is a program developed by the Lions International to raise money for mass ion air research. The Milford Lions last year donated 15,000 to help cure blindness and its related causes. As part of that effort, the Milford Lions would like to conduct a toll road in Milford on April 27. Rain date will be May 4 from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We request permission to set up three collection points at the site, site being the intersection of Route 16 and 109. With safety in mind, traffic cones would be set up to give a safe area on sidewalks, islands for the Lions members to stand and request donations, and all collectors will be wearing yellow day glow safety vests. The toll road would be announced with signage to give motorists notice prior to the intersections. Vehicles would only be approached when they are stopped at the light. Attached is a copy, I read it, their certificate of insurance is up to date. And it's a letter to the Chief of Police from John Manicello. I am requesting your permission to borrow approximately 30 to 40 safety traffic cones as we have done in the past years.
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, we, we approve these or disapprove of them based on a lot, right? So there's a lot of concern as it relates to just any group out there doing toll roads, and there are some intersections that you shouldn't be in, and so the process has been followed every year by the Lions Club. They do great work. They are safe. They've been doing it for a number of years and been doing an outstanding job, and the chief has signed off on their plan, so I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous as well. Direct is a gift of acceptance. Dear Milford Board of Selectmen, I would like to request the acceptance of $3,532 in tonal donations for the Holistic Health Fair 2018 and our regional substance navigational efforts. We request that these funds be deposited in the Regional Substance Navigation Program gift account number 2624-4830. Currently, these funds have been deposited to account 2583 JAG account in June of 2018. The total deposit was $4,632 with expenses for the event of $1,100. Thank you in advance, Amy Leoni.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve.
Second it.
And I will make that.
Very gracious.
Yep, very nice. I would make that unanimous. Next new business item is the dog hearing decision, and Rick, I'll turn that to you.
Yes, a hearing was held on February 13 of this year. The case is Rose Gonzalez v. Sarah Fernandez and Richard Auguste. Witnesses testified, and after hearing testimony, I make the following findings a fact. Based upon the credible evidence presented, Rose Gonzalez and Elisa Gonzalez reside in Milford, they're the owners of a male dog named Duke. Sarah Fernandez and Richard Auguste also reside in Milford and are the owners of a neutered male terrier lab dog named Odin. On January 22 of this year, the dog Odin attacked the dog Duke suddenly and without provocation, and severely bit Duke in the neck area, breaking the skin and causing Duke to bleed. Duke was taken to the Akron Animal Hospital on January 22. He underwent surgery, four lacerations. Pursuant to General Law Chapter 140, Section 157, I find Odin is a dangerous dog. Based on that, I make the following recommendations after consulting with the animal control officer. Odin shall be confined to the premises of Sarah Fernandez and Richard Auguste, either securely confined indoors or outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog area, dog run area. The pen or dog run area shall have a secure roof, and if there is no floor secured to the sides, then the sides shall be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet. Within the confines of such pen or dog run, a dog house or proper shelter for the male dog is provided to protect the dog. Ms. Fernandez and Mr. Auguste shall have 120 days from the date of this order to construct said lock pen or dog run area, and it shall be constructed to the satisfaction of the animal control officer, Rochelle Thompson. Ms. Fernandez and Mr. Auguste shall have a microchip implanted in Odin within 30 days from this order. When the microchip is implanted, this information number will be reported to the animal control officer, Rochelle Thompson. Odin shall not be allowed outside either on or off the Fernandez and Auguste property without being on a leash. When Odin is removed from his premises, he shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. Any change in ownership or address change of where Odin is kept shall be reported immediately in writing to both the town clerk and the animal control department pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 138. If Ms. Fernandez and/or Mr. Auguste are found in violation of the order, Odin shall be subject to seizure and empowerment by the Milford Police Department and/or Animal Control Department, and further, each would be ordered to immediately surrender to the Milford Town Clerk the licenses and tags in their possession and be prohibited from licensing or owning a dog within the Commonwealth for five years. This finding shall be reported to the town clerk in accordance with General Law Chapter 140, Section 157H, and this order issued by this hearing authority shall be valid throughout the Commonwealth. That is the recommendation of myself as after this hearing.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you very much.
Yeah, do you need affirmation or vote, Rick?
I just need, I would need a vote.
That's what I would, that's what I thought, historically, we did.
Yes, this would be the one.
It's been a while, though, since we've done.
It has, thankfully, yes.
Yeah, I just happened to notice that in addition to what you had read, you had also written in the report that the dog was not on a leash.
Was not.
So, okay, yeah, so I would vote to support the dog hearing officers' recommendations, finding the fact, and determination on this matter.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next item is Town Administrator Records Management. Rick?
Yes, we did send out an RFP for a, for the implementation of an electronic and tangible records management system. We did receive a number of companies, in excess of 20, who did pull the RFP and look at the RFP. However, we only received one bid. That bid is from King Information Systems, Inc. They're of Three Edgewater Drive in Norwood. The quoted amount is $55,910.[1767.99] The RFP did contain a not-to-exceed of sixty thousand dollars. Would be my recommendation to award the contract to Kim, King Information Systems, Inc. I did do some checking with other towns who have used King Information Systems, Inc., and received nothing but positive comments about the implementation of their system and their response. So that would be my recommendation to this board.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Any discussion, Bill?
No, just nice job with the procurement process, and also, as you just stated, following up on referrals with other communities that are using them. That's my only comment.
Thank you.
Just affirmation that Rick's doing a good job with contract bidding and awards and procurement. So with that, I'd make a motion to follow the recommendations of the town administrators related to awarding the bid for implementation of electronic and tangible records management system to King Information Systems, Inc., of Three Edgewater Drive, Norwood, Mass. O two O six two, for the amount of fifty-five thousand nine hundred and ten dollars.
I'll second that.
Before I make that unanimous, Rick, I find it very interesting that so many companies went through the process but didn't end up bidding.
Yeah, we did, we were able to tell with our new system, we were able to see who actually pulls. I get an email every time someone looks at
Yeah.
the RFP itself, so, yeah, there were a number of them, which was.
With that, I'll make that unanimous. Next item is permit for Celebrate Milford, another great event in this community. Let's see, "Permit to obstruct the public way, youth parade to kick off Celebrate Milford on Saturday, May eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Rain date will be Sunday, the nineteenth. Parade assembles at nine thirty AM at Stacy School. Loop steps off ten AM. March up Spruce Street, on DeCanga Street, and down Walnut Street, concluding in Memorial School Loop."
And the second was just to ask for a banner.
Yeah, and it's. Banner to advertise Celebrate Milford, which will go across Main Street near the intersection of Central Street. Banner to be placed three weeks before the event, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, and will come down within a week after the event. So there's two permits.
Yeah, as you said, Mr. Chairman, a great event, and Mr. Vupchelli is lead, appears to be leading this effort, at least on the contact information, and, you know, look forward to a year without rain. Last year was a little wet. And maybe we can throw softballs at Mr. Kincaid again, I'm sorry, at the, at the water dunking tank.
Exactly.
Not at you. And I'd recommend approval on both of the requests, or I'd make a motion to approve both requests.
And there was also a request for a one-day license, so I want to make sure that's included. Two permits, permit for parade, permit for a banner, and a one-day license.
Permit to obstruct, obstruct public way.
You're going to have a parade is one of them.
Permit to overhang a public way, and I just don't have the request. Do you have one?
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah, I don't have it here.
Yeah, I have mine right on the top.
Yeah, I didn't get that one for some reason.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So let me do this differently. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve a license for wine and malt only for the Celebrate Milford, Inc. event. It's an annual event to be held five eighteen and a rain date of five nineteen. I'd like to also make a motion, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
That we approve the permit to obstruct, obstruct a public way to kick off the event. And thirdly, I'd like to make a motion to approve their permit to overhang a public way with a banner to advertise the Celebrate Milford event.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well.
Yeah, sorry, didn't see it. Wasn't there yet. Yeah, it's the first time it's ever happened.
Okay, and the next one is from the Police Chief, Thomas J. O'Laughlin. "On Saturday, February sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, in response to your email of February twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, I went to the intersections of Route sixteen and one oh nine to make observations of the crosswalks as they relate to the average traffic patterns for that area. As Mr. Mark Riordan indicated to you, the crosswalks at this intersection are fading as a result of volume of traffic and weather conditions. The crocwa, crossmark from the center island to the sidewalk area closest to the shopping plaza is locating at the posterior portion of a sharp bend in the roadway eastbound from Route sixteen to one oh nine, and is not visible to motorists until they are well into the turn. There is a yield sign located, located near the crosswalk to facilitate vehicles turning from the eastbound and westbound lanes of Route sixteen onto Route one oh nine, and there is a sign on Route sixteen indicating to motorists that there is a yield sign, there is a yield sign ahead. I would recommend the installation of a sign on the pole that has the sign indicating that there is a yield ahead indicating crosswalk with an arrow pointing down. This should provide motorists with the reasonable notification of the presence of the crosswalk."
Yeah, it makes sense when I, Mr. Chairman, when I look at the the email from Mr. Riordan, I have to ask, though, is, I, no issues with the Police Chief's recommendation, that just makes sense. But, Rick, has, has there been anything done? Because, let me just read Mr. Riordan's email. "I cross the intersection at Route one oh nine and Route sixteen daily at the end of Prairie Street, crossing Route sixteen, heading to Rite Aid Pharmacy daily. There is an island, that island does not get sidewalk, the sidewalk plowed. Cross, crossing from the island to the right, to the Rite Aid sidewalk, the sidewalk opening does not get plowed as well." And they're asking that we look into this for them, please, or he is asking that. And then it goes into the yellow paint. So I think we've addressed, I think the chief's recommendation addresses the wear and fading. And I'm happy to make a motion to approve that. I'm just wondering, is there anything we've done to look at working with the Highway Department to see if we can get that sidewalk plowed and to open up that?
Yes, I'll speak with Scott. I can't imagine that's going to be an issue.
Yeah, because you only went into that property if you cross over, Rick is.
Down the sidewalk.
Down the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, no.
So if it's not plowed, you're out on, you're out on the street.
Yeah, you're on the street. I think, I think that's the bigger issue here, right?
They're covering, he's getting the signage, that's in the chief, in the chief's wheelhouse, and then reaching out to Scotty to make sure that the crosswalk and everything.
I'll take care of that.
Very good. So, I, the motion is to approve the Police Chief's recommendation, and then suggest further that we address the issue of sidewalk plowing with the Highway Superintendent.
Second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item is, we have our Town Council here. For the conservation restrictions. Must have forgot something.
We did annual beautification day, thinking about how we could skip, but there's just no chance. We left ourselves with dead air.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How was your trip?
Very good, thank you.
Everybody went away but Bill and I.
I know, what's up with that? When I go away, it's the China.
I'm sure it's beautiful, Bill.
Yeah.
I'll stick with the beach, though.
Sure it's nice, but I don't want to go.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, I apologize.
That's okay.
Didn't realize you were already waiting for me.
Go right ahead, Charles.
So, this is with respect to several conservation restrictions which are being donated to the town. These have already been approved by the Conservation Commission. I just want to make sure that I'm clear that these are restrictions on the land and not a donation of the land to the town. There's one conservation restriction for Deer Street. Excuse me, two for Deer Street. Was with respect to the Gutierrez Company. This is the construction that's over by Restaurant Depot. And the other is White Wood Preserve. These are, just, just so you're aware, these are habitats that have been deemed to be important for the reasons that they were deemed important, both because of wildlife habit, habitats, as well as significant other resources, natural resources, and archaeological resources, and things like that. For those reasons, it became necessary to grant restrictions. The restrictions would be granted to the Conservation Commission. The purpose of the restrictions is to achieve, in perpetuity, a buffer of protection along these properties. The properties would, would not necessarily be open to the public, but they would be properties once the restrictions are in place. There would be limitation on the intrusion, disruption of the natural habitat, disruption of the topography in the surfaces, and the like. I will tell you that this was something that was primarily handled by Town Engineer, Mike Dean, but, and was in progress at the time of my arrival here, back ten months ago or so. However, when the restrictions came up to be reviewed by me, there were several changes that I wanted to see in for clarification and for further protections, to make sure that the, that one and all of the protections were clear and unambiguous in the document themselves. The suggested changes that I had requested, which were in addition to the ones requested originally by Engineer Dean, went off to the state for review. The state approved them, Gutierrez Companies and the donors of the land approved them. And so, what I can say to you, this Board of Selectmen this evening, is that each and everything that we wanted to see included in these restrictions is now in them. There's, it's been fully vetted by the Conservation Commission in the initial draft, and then once again, just last week, they approved and executed the documents. And so, it is in keeping with the goals of preserving the land, its natural status, its habitat, its flora, fauna, and archaeological resources, that it is in the town's best interest to approve. And I would strongly encourage you to, to approve it, accept the restrictions, approve them, and sign them. And I have copies of them here this evening, ready for your signatures. And I'll answer any questions, to the extent you might have any.
I have no questions, because what was just presented in the packet of information and what Town Council just provided for additional information, the only comment I have is, Charles, thank you for weighing in further and following up on the original, Town Engineer's original recommendations to make sure that it was further clarified and that your changes were incorporated in the final draft.
Thank, thank you.
Feel free to make a motion now, you, you addressed my questions, no, I appreciate, but.
And thank you, Charles, for all this information.
My questions, and actually, for a lot of information, it was actually, I mean, it was.
Easy read, right?
It was, yeah. Pretty interesting to see all the land that's going to be preserved as well around the development, so.
I want to actually go out and take a walk. I haven't walked the land. I'd like to walk it and see it at some point, and I will do that.
Until the snow and ice is gone.
I was going to say, not the right weather for it right now, but I'll get out there.
Thank you very much, though, Ken.
So, so with that, I'd like to make a motion. And the, the motion is twofold. One, to accept the conservation restrictions in the document as provided by Town Council. I don't know if you need document numbers or anything, but as dated December eleventh, twenty eighteen. And, secondly, to authorize the Chairman of the Milford Board of Selectmen to sign on behalf of the board our approval of that.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Makes it easier, doesn't it?
Next agenda item, we did at the very beginning of the meeting. We do have an executive session tonight to discuss water company updates and police collective bargaining with Town Council. That will require a roll call vote.
I'll vote to go into executive session for the purposes that you've had stated, and I, roll call vote aye.
I'll second the motion, and I also roll call vote aye.
I will make it unanimous, and I will roll call vote aye as well, and we will not be returning to regular session. Good night, everybody, and have a nice week. Thank you.